Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the thirty-seventh meeting of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland. I hereby call this meeting to order at six P M. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
President Clark?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
You have a call, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number three, the approval of the minutes from our July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review these meeting minutes. If there are no suggested changes, I will now entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the approve that July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember James Cole.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, moving we were moving to agenda item number four, we will now hear reports from the mayor and city council. I invite Councilmember Christine Johnson to present her report first.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President and council colleagues, administration and residents. We did have a little break in August, but it didn't stop us from doing work, right? So a couple of things I'd like to share. Um, August eleventh, the mayor and I met with Ms. Clara Cobb. She is Miss Wheelchair Marilyn, and we met with her to discuss ways in which we can help the community, which help her community in our city. We are keeping an open relationship that will allow her to communicate both the needs and the accomplishments of her constituency to the general public, the business communication, and the legislation. So as Chair for the C A C for persons with disabilities, I will look to have her come to some of our meetings in the future. So look forward to that. On August the nineteenth, we attended the open mic night, um, where the mayor had the teams come and talk. I'm only one team attended, but it was very well attended by, um, he had a D J, some other, um, adults that we could speak to. So I did have a chance to attend that. On August twentieth, attended the meeting for members of the various boards, commissions, and committees throughout the city, basically to share all that they do as well as to recruit new members because we always need people, um, to join those boards. On August twenty-eighth, we attended the city hall in the park at the Greenview Cabana, again, another well-attended event. Give us a chance to get out into the community and hear and speak with the constituents. Then in September, I participated in my first emancipation five K walk run. I did not run, not a runner, but I did walk the mile, not the whole five K. But I was a great cheerleader for those, and it inspired me to do more. So I will continue to participate and will eventually walk the five K. We also participated in the parade later that afternoon. So just wanted to thank Ms. Jackie, Dawn, and other members of Saint Mark's Church for continuing to highlight Emancipation Day in Laurel. It was a great event. Despite rain a little bit later, but the weather was, um, beautiful. And that same day, I attended the Doggy Dip Day at Greenview Pool. So it was just great to see all the dogs and people enjoying themselves. It was just was a beautiful day of events on Saturday. Um, just to share some upcoming events that I'm gonna look forward to on Wednesday, um, September the tenth. We will be celebrating the anniversary of the Craig A. Mo Laurel Multi-Service Center. So good, great to celebrate that. It's been a good resource within the community. I look forward to, uh, meeting with my colleagues on Friday, September the twelfth for our mini council retreat so we can continue to learn to do what for the constituents. And then lastly, Wednesday, September the seventeenth, there will be a citizens advisory committee for the persons with disabilities and senior residents. This is held six P M via Zoom, and I realize maybe I don't share enough. We still are looking for members, but let me just give a brief overview of what we'll be talking about so people can generate some interest. So what we talk about during the meetings, there's an overview, we share upcoming events, activities, and resources for the community. We discuss what's going on at the state level, specifically, um, information from the Department of Aging and the Developmental Disabilities Administration. That comes from the state of Maryland, emails, a lot of information. We get that out to the public. And again, we are still looking for members, and I want to remind people also that this can include caretakers. I know for me and my family, you know, taking care of an elderly parent or a disabled child or things like that. Sometimes you need a sounding board, or you just don't know what to do. You don't know what resources are out there. So that is what this committee is for. We're here to be that sounding board and to share resources. So if you are interested, or you know of anyone who might benefit from joining, please have them reach out to me and the mayor's office so we can work on getting those appointments. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Next, we have Councilmember James Cole.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back, even if it's just virtual. It was a busy month of August for me, so I'm happy to to report on some of the highlights from last month. Uh, I believe we all attended the National Night Out on August the fifth. That was a wonderful event put on by Laurel Police Department. Very well attended this year, one of the biggest that I think I've attended. On August ninth, Laurel Pride Committee and the Fourth of July Committee hosted a joint fundraiser for a crab sale that was, uh, available for pickup at the Parks and Recreation Department on Sandy Spring Road. That was a successful first fundraiser for both the joint committees. They will be doing these fundraisers again, uh, next year, hopefully two fundraisers, one in June and one in October. On the tenth of August, I attended the American Legion Car Show. Again, they had record participation with more cars than ever before. On the eleventh of August, we had a pride meeting to go over how our fundraisers, uh, had gone, and again, to plan the next fundraiser that was held on August the fifteenth. On August the twenty-eighth, I attended City Hall in the Park with the other council members. And then with Mr. Simmons, I had a follow-up to go over some resident concerns on the thirtieth. On August twenty-ninth, I met with Mayor Sidnor to go over several pieces of legislation that I worked on throughout this past summer, including two pieces for economic and community development, and one that would update our code to allow for native plantings. Again, I attended the Emancipation Day with everyone else on Saturday, and then yesterday morning, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Breakfast. Those are from eight-thirty to eleven, the first Sunday of every month. This was their first one since their summer recess. The next one will be the first Sunday of October. Upcoming meetings for this month, we are holding our Environmental Affairs Committee meeting at six P M on September the twenty-third. We are hoping to have a quorum after several months of no quorum. And then on September the twenty-seventh, Laurel Pride Committee is having their final fundraiser of the season at Newsback's at eleven A M. Uh, that Saturday, we are hoping to see you there. It'll be our final fundraiser before the big event on October eleventh. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Next, we will have Councilmember Jeffrey Mills.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. Uh, well, I definitely want to say as a as a father of five, um, I want to say welcome back to, uh, to welcome back to school for the children and the parents. Yeah, and, uh, July, let me start at July sixteenth, where we had the West Side Meeting at the City Hall with the developers and constituents. Um, that's that was about the, uh, next part, next phase of the development, uh, behind the Wawa, which will be a Panda Express. Um, on the seventeenth, July seventeenth, at the library, Laurel Library, I was hanging out with the Laurel Resist Organizations for the John Lewis Day for, uh, for a peaceful protest. Um, that same day, I had a public safety meeting that evening, Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting. Uh, July twenty-fourth, there was, um, the City Hall in the park at the Marcus Colbert Field for the Overlook Community in Ward Two. Um, July twenty-sixth, I went to the Merlin Live Casino, not to gamble, because I don't do that, but to support a Laurel City native. Demond Nicholson had a boxing match, a championship boxing match, and that was a that was a great event. Uh, August, August the fifth, I attended the forty-second Annual National Night Out at the at the Goody Park, and, uh, yeah, that was cool. We got to see the, uh, see the see the firefighters tear the tear the roof off on a on a car, and, um, the jaws of life, that's 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 something serious. Um, I I remember when I was in the, uh, I'll see the scars on my face, so I went through a windshield before, and God kept me here so I can be a councilman. But, um, but please wear your seat, just just your set your seatbelt. Um, and I definitely appreciate the EMS and fire fire squad and, uh, and the police as well. Um, August ninth, Angels Haven Organization had a back-to-school backpack giveaway, uh, over in Ward One. And the, um, that same day, I was at the William Bean Elementary School for a back back-to-school bash. And, um, August tenth, I was at the V F W for the Car and Bike Show on Main Street. Awesome cars, awesome bikes, my goodness. Uh, August twentieth, um, what was at the with the mayor's committee board and commissions meeting at the municipal building? And August twenty-second, I attended the Cops Camp Graduation, and that was at the lake. And, uh, a lot of children, a lot of children, and they say that the city of Laurel don't have nothing for the kids. Yeah, right. We have a lot. We have a lot going on for the children here in the city of Laurel. Um, and on that same day, I was at, I went to the Vansville Elementary School, uh, back-to-school block block party. And, um, then on August twenty-fourth at Largo High School, um, I was at the back-to-school vaccine and backpack giveaway. Um, we gave out a lot of school supplies everywhere, so you know, this this year. And, um, that was with the county exec, Ayesha Brave Boy, and the state's attorney, Tara Jackson. And on August twenty-eighth, City Hall in the Park at the Greenville, uh, Drive Cabana. That was that was a well-attended event, and, uh, and the mayor, mayor, mayor been putting some hamburgers and hot dogs out there, y'all. So you might want to come to these city, these, uh, these city hall, these city hall meetings in the park. He 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 turning it up, y'all. He's turning it up. And, uh, my last thing, Madam President, is an upcoming event, uh, the Pushed Into Purpose Conference. The Pushed Into Purpose Conference is going to be, uh, motivation and inspiration for the family and friends. That's going to be October twenty-fifth, ten A M to one P M at the Craig A. Mo Laurel Multi-Service Center. So please tell a friend, please come out, and we're going to be talking about a lot of different topics. Uh, a panel of five, we have entrepreneurs, we're going to be talking about A I, transportation, food, fashion, fun. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of different topics. Um, it's gonna be a financial literacy event as well. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Next, we have Councilmember Adrian Simmons.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and, uh, as others had said, it's good to take off some time during the recess, too. Uh, I was able to head out to the eastern shore and spend a little time with family out at the Acetate area for, uh, for a bit there at the beach, and I just had a lot of fun. Also, for the first time, got to go, took a day trip down to Chinkateek and the southern tip of Acetate, which I had never been to in my life. Um, so just an encouragement for folks, if you haven't been out there, definitely part of Maryland, to take advantage of, uh, some of the natural beauty out of Acetate. Uh, towards the end of August, I did get to meet with some of our retired residents and to share with them about the Laurel, uh, elderly and veterans property tax credit that I helped update earlier this year. I thank you also to the Budget and Personnel Services Department for helping answer some clarifying questions. I really appreciate, you know, your patience with different odds and ends that came up. Um, I plan to post some of the details to my, you know, council blog, adrianforlaurel.org. But if you're looking for it and it's not up there yet, please just shoot me an email, and I'm happy to share it with you, um, and how that works if you'd like to apply. I also participated in the Maryland Municipal League webinar on the legislative priorities for this coming state session. And, uh, right now, uh, M M L is focusing on diversifying the revenue streams that municipalities like Laurel have that feed into our budget. And the idea there is to try to, you know, reluse reduce the reliance we have on the property taxes, which makes up sixty-seven percent of our budget, and to see if there's ways to sort of diversify that a little bit further. So I'll be tracking that more on my blog if you're interested. I mean, who would be, right, diversifying municipal revenue streams? Um, but, uh, look, look for that hopefully some more as we approach the the session. Um, quick update for folks who maybe who, uh, haven't visited Main Street in a few weeks, the Chandler Robbins mural is now complete, and it is beautiful. So Main Street and Fifth, I think, is the right intersection. And, uh, drive by, stop by, you can get some ice cream at Gigi's there, maybe have some dinner at Olive on Main while you're there, and as it's just right around the corner from those two. But, uh, definitely something you want to see. Uh, it looks great. Uh, Laurel for the Protection will also be hosting a sort of unveiling event. Sometimes September, October date is to be determined, but sort of keep your ears open for that. So that should be pretty awesome. My understanding is there will be a birding outing right after the event as well. So, um, more on that to come. A lot of other events, as as fellow council members have shared as well, um, popped into the Laurel Elementary's Back-to-School Bash, um, the City Hall in the Park at Protection Greens, the Emancipation Emancipation Day five K, um, the Doggy Dip Day, um, the Emancipation Day Parade, um, you know, with Saint Marks and just, to me, I'm always impressed with the deep history that we have here in Laurel and always, you know, great to be with, uh, the folks to be able to celebrate that. So thank you for that. And as usual, you can find out more, uh, on my blog as well, adrianforlaurel.org. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. For my report, since our last official meeting held on July twenty-eighth, um, before the August recess, for the August recess, I was lucky to attend my Clark family reunion for the second time in my life and met over a hundred cousins, one realizing that we went to school at Clark Atlanta at the same time, and I didn't know who she was. So it was really good to meet them. Um, for my report, I attended, along with my colleagues, the Laurel Police Department's National Night Out. Thank you to the Laurel Police for making the extra effort always to stay connected to our kids and our families. Next, on August eleventh, I took time to meet with Kiwanis International's president and executive team at City Hall to understand more about their organization and how we as a community can help enrich our youth. The next day, attended their kickoff meeting at the Noral North Laurel Community Center. So if any, if you or anyone that you know would like to be a part of the board or a member, you can visit facebook.com backslash Laurel M D Kiwanis. Uh, Friday, August fifteenth, during the recess, I also attended our back-to-school supply drive held by the city of Laurel at the Multi-Service Center. Thank you to everyone who gave, and it was wonderful to see the food boxes offered back to the community members who needed them. On August seventeenth, I attended the Prince George's County Public Schools Back-to-School Event in Landover, where I saw Dr. Tier Harris of Laurel High School there. On Friday, August nineteenth, I also attended Laurel High School's Back-to-School Supply Drive, had the opportunity to speak with the students, parents, teachers, barbers, and administrators, and even captured a few interviews with students, which you can view on my Councilwoman Kyla Clark Instagram page. Also, thank you to our teachers, our administrators, our volunteers and parents. My mom is a retired teacher. Uh, we thank you for everything that you do day in and day out for our youth. This past Saturday, I laced up my sneakers along with my colleagues and joined neighbors from the Saint Marks United Methodist Church. It was delightful for me because I usually don't get out and exercise as much. We're so busy. Um, but it was really good to see the community homecoming on the church grounds and within our parks. Moments like this always remind me of why local action really matters. That's why I was also proud to sponsor and see the city of Laurel adopt a resi resolution along with my fellow colleagues, honoring Emancipation Day, a powerful acknowledgement by the city of Laurel of Maryland's eighteen-sixty-four vote to abolish slavery, and a promise that our city stands firm on liberty, justice, and equality for every resident as we keep writing the next chapter together. Another big thank you, as my colleague Councilwoman Johnson said, to Saint Marks, to Ms. Jackie, to Tommy Matthews, for always highlighting Emancipation Day. We really appreciate you. As mentioned by my colleagues, I also attended Doggy Dip Day, and that same day, attended an all-day board meeting with the Prince George's Municipal Association as an at-large board member. As we close out our summer events, I want to give a very big thank you to all of our staff, all of our department heads and department staff within the city of Laurel. It takes a lot of work to put these events on, whether it's just setting up things, cleaning them up, ensuring everyone's safe, and just making sure everyone's having a great time. So thank you to our city of Laurel administration. Thank you to our departments, uh, for your dedicated work this summer. A few reminder reminders on behalf of Mayor Sidnor, there will be an Adopt a Senior Recruitment meeting on Wednesday, September tenth, from six to seven P M at the Laurel Municipal Center. We will also have our final City Hall in the Park for twenty-twenty-five at Emancipation Park on September twenty-fifth, from six-thirty P M to eight P M. As Councilmember Mills said, if you missed the ones before, you don't want to miss this one. There has been music, food, and lots of conversation. And finally, remember to sign up for Laurel Citizens University, which includes eight sessions held on Thursdays in October and November from six-thirty P M to nine-thirty P M. Spaces fill up quickly, so register today by calling City Hall or visit our city of Laurel social media pages for more information. That now concludes our report. Moving to agenda item number five, our mayoral appointments requiring council approval for our multicultural advisory committee. Um, this was originally adopted by the mayor and city council on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. This committee consists of seven volunteer members plus a city staff secretary. The committee's primary purpose is to promote cultural diversity by advising the city leadership on multicultural issues, educating the community about cultural diversity, recognizing individuals making contributions to diversity efforts, and organizing an annual community and cultural day festival held each second Saturday in September. Do I have a motion from the council to approve the appointments of the following individuals? Marcio da Silva, Danielle Delgado, Ebony Lockwood, Jaya Persad, Joanne Ricketts, and Arthur Thompson for a term beginning September eighth, twenty-twenty-five to September eighth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Yes, Madam President, I move that we accept the mayoral appointments as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Adrian Simmons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a second from Councilmember Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations to all the members. We are excited that you are here with us. Next on our agenda, we have our general public hearing. Agenda item number six, this is the time that we've set aside to hear from you, our community members. Your voice matters, and we value your input on any matter concerning our city. We encourage you to share your thoughts, your concerns, and your ideas with us as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. Whether it's about city services, community programs, or issues affecting your neighborhood, this is your opportunity to be heard. I will now open the general public hearing at six-twenty-three P M. Madam Clerk, for the record, can you please tell me, is anyone signed up to speak today for our general public hearing?
No, Madam President, we don't have anyone signed up.
Thank you for confirming. Seeing that there are no speakers signed up today, I will now close the general public hearing at six-twenty-three P M. Moving next to agenda item number seven, tonight, we have two bid recommendations from the Laurel Police Department. The first is a bid recommendation for a TASER contract renewal with the recommendation to update current models. We have Chief Russell Hamel here with us today to provide more context. Chief Hamel, you now have the floor.
Good evening, Council President Clark and our esteemed city council. Thank you for this opportunity, and Deputy Chief Blazinski is on the call with me as well. So the Laurel Police Department's been utilizing different variations of the TASER created by Axon Enterprises for about fifteen years. The most recent contract for the TASER seven model expired in August, and we were transitioning to the most updated model, which is the TASER ten. So we're going from the seven to the ten. The ten is the latest version of Axon's less lethal weapon platform. It is an operational upgrade from our current TASER as it holds ten darts. It can be deployed separately, greatly reducing the likelihood of our officers having to use other types of force. The darts can be accurately deployed at nearly twice the distance as the previous TASER models, which allow our officers to deploy the TASER from a much safer distance and position than in the past. This provides officers with more time and space to de-escalate, which is part of all of our training, and, uh, possibly before possibly resorting to higher levels of force, um, which we we try to avoid. Additionally, TASER seven and the other previous models operated at a fifty-thousand-volt capacity. A TASER ten uses only a thousand volts, yet achieves similar near muscular incapacitation. This reduction in voltage allows for smaller wire and cartridges cartridges, easy for me to say, and also allows for enhanced accuracy and performance. With the new contract, we're also picking up, uh, virtual reality trainers, four total for the TASER ten, and allows us to enhance our training programs pretty significantly in regards to TASER operation. The Laurel Police Department, um, has funding for this project. It's available via our approved budget and by transferring some additional funds approved for other purchases due to the needs and urgency noted, uh, in this matter, thanks to BAPS. So it is respectfully recommended at this time that the Laurel Police Department purchase seventy-eight of the TASER ten, Axon Enterprise Incorporated. Uh, they're located at seventeen-eight-hundred North Eighty-Fifth Street, Scottsdale, Arizona. For the total price per year is ninety-three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents. It's part of a five-year agreement for a grand total of four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. We have purchased the bundled option here, this, which is what we would like to do rather, and, um, for this conducted energy weapon. So it has all associated costs, including software replacements, and that pricing saves us just over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the late for the contract. So we're seeking your approval for this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council aside from what you asked in our recent work session about this bid recommendation? All right, with no additional questions, I will now entertain a motion to approve the purchase of seventy-eight new TASER tens from Axon Enterprise Incorporated in Scottsdale, Arizona, for a price of ninety-three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents per year as a part of a five-year agreement totaling four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
Madam President, I motion to, um, to approve the for the, uh, yeah. Good.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who's gonna be?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second from Councilwoman Christine Johnson. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving to agenda item number eight, we have another bid recommendation from the Laurel Police Department for the approval to purchase a new handgun to be used by Laurel officers as a new standard issue sidearm for the department. Chief Hamel, you now have the floor again.
Thank you once again. A number of months ago, uh, we directed that our department firearms subject matter experts conduct a review of the usefulness and effectiveness of our current department-issued handgun, as well as study for a possible replacement handgun, depending on the outcome of that first step. These studies have led us to the conclusion that me as the police chief have reached that, uh, we would, we should change to a different weapons platform as our standard-issue department sidearm. We also believe that prudence and safety require that this change be made in a timely manner, as soon as reasonably practical, which leads to this current request. The study as to which new weapon platform should be adopted led to a final recommendation to consider a number of handguns with the Walther P D P Professional Full-Size Nine-Millimeter Pistol, four-and-a-half-inch model, with a dynamic trigger, Magwell, three separate magazines, and the A-Crop two direct-mounted optics being the preferred choice by the consensus of our subject matter experts. The preferred handguns, as outfitted as I just noted, retail for seventeen-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per weapon, but the manufacturer-recommended dealer has agreed to sell each one of these to us for nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and ninety cents per weapon. We were directed by the manufacturer to Eagle Point Gun in Thoroughfare, New Jersey as a sales point. And, um, the cost of each weapon, as I, as I just noted, it's, uh, we consider reasonable for a total cost of eighty-four of eighty-four thousand dollars, eighty-four thousand fifty-one dollars. It should be noted that we were also directed to another vendor, but they could not supply the requested handguns in a timely fashion, leading to the recommendation of this vendor. Funding for this project is available via the Laurel Police Department approved budget by transferring funds approved for other purchases, and BAPS will backfill that in the future. We believe this is a urgent matter and respectfully request your kind consideration and approval of it to purchase these weapons through Eagle Point Gun in Thoroughfare, New Jersey at nine thirty-three ninety per a total of eighty-four thousand fifty-one dollars. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief Hamel. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council from what aside from what was asked in our recent work session about this bid recommendation? Councilmember Mills?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Chief. I I just yeah, when you mentioned that it was that you that you was trying to find another another company, but they couldn't get him produce them in a timely fashion. That that's two vendors. I was just wondering, was there a third? Most times we like try to look for like three, three bids for competitive offer.
Walther's the manufacturer, sir. They point us at their two primary vendors on these. It's gonna supply a large amount of guns, which ninety may not sound like a large amount, but that is a large amount of guns to be purchased at one time. And these two vendors were directed to us by Walther, and this is the one that could make the delivery that we needed, and the price point was advantageous in my opinion.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Are there any additional questions from the council or statements? All right, seeing no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion to approve the purchase of ninety Walther P D P Professional Full Size Nine Millimeter Pistols from Eagle Point Gun of Thoroughfare, New Jersey for a total of eighty-four thousand fifty-one dollars.
Madam President, I motion for to approve the purchase.
We have a motion from Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
I will second.
We have a second from Councilmember Cole. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Was it ninety or ninety-eight guns?
Say that again.
Ninety or ninety-eight guns?
It's it's ninety.
It's ninety.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I thought I misheard. Now I forgot to give me information.
Mills and.
It was Mills for the motion, Councilmember Mills for the motion, and it was Councilmember Cole for the second.
All right, yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, thank you to you and the council for your kind consideration speed with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Hamel, and thank you, Deputy Blazinski, for your time. Moving to agenda item number nine. We also have two recommendations from the Laurel Department of Public Works. The first is a bid request for the approval to award a contract to repair and update Snowden Place, Ward Street, and Northview Court through the Improvement Project L A twenty-six dash zero zero one. Director Tim Miller, okay, there you are. You now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President Clark, Mayor Sidnor, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for award of the contract for Snowden Place, Ward Street, and Northview Court Improvement Project L A twenty-six dash zero zero one. This project includes the construction and repair of concrete sidewalks, ADA ramps, concrete curving, roadway markings, sign relocation, and asphalt resurfacing of these streets in their entirety. The Department of Public Works has solicited bids for this project, resulting in the receipt of seven submissions. A formal bid opening was conducted on August eleventh, fourteenth, sorry, two thousand twenty-five at the Laurel Municipal Center. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. V M P Construction, two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. E and R Services Inc., two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, one hundred, two hundred and forty-three, one sixteen. S F M S LLC, two hundred and forty-four thousand, one dollar and thirty-eight cents. Espina Paving, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Vino Construction Group, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. M R B Enterprises Inc., five hundred and ninety-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. The apparent low bidder and firm is is a certified minority business enterprise. Funding for this project is available through the adopted F Y two thousand twenty-six Capital Improvement Program for Snowden Place, Ward Street, Northview Court Improvement Projects. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to V M P Construction Inc. of Lanham, Maryland, a certified minority business enterprise for their bid of two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars with an additional contingency of ten percent, twenty thousand, two thirty-nine, for a total bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Miller. Are there any additional questions from the council or statements regarding this bid recommendation? All right, with no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion to approve the bid recommendation for this project to be awarded to V M P Construction Inc. of Lanham, Maryland for their bid of two hundred, two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars with a contingency of an additional twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a total of two hundred, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Madam President, I move that we award the contract to V M P Construction for their bid of two oh two, three ninety-seven plus contingency for a total of two hundred twenty-two thousand, six thirty-six.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Simmons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second from Councilmember James Cole. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, next we have agenda item number ten, which is a contract recommendation for the first for the next five years, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty, to select open-ended architectural and engineering services. To provide additional context, we have again Director Tim Miller. You now have the floor.
Thank you very much. The city's current open-ended A and E consulting contracts have expired as of July first, two thousand twenty-five, and an A and E selection committee has concluded an American Public Works Association, also known as A P W A, Red Book Fifth Edition Qualification-Based Selection for new and renewal of A and E consultants to represent the city. Q B S in compliance with the Brooks Act, Public Law ninety-two, five eighty-two, means that the qualifications of architect, engineer consultants are the primary determining factor in consultant selection. This has been a two-part interest proposal, expression of interest proposal that identified key staff that would work on a city contract along with their qualifications and summaries of their work. Each member of the committee reviewed their expression of interest proposals from the competing firms with resultant ratings identifying a shortlist of five firms. From the list, a total of fourteen firms were identified and rated, five of which of those firms were then passed on to phase two. Part two included each of the five firms on the shortlist providing a formal presentation to the A and E selection committee, followed by a question and answer session resulting in the selection of the top three A and E firms. The A and E selection committee comprised of the following. Bill Bailey, Director, Department of Public Works and Recreation; Thomas Helm, Assistant Director, Department of Public Works; Armin Safka, City Engineer, Department of Public Works. The evaluation resorts results. The shortlist with interviews was K C I Technologies of Fulton, Maryland, Century Engineering of Hunt Valley, Maryland, Daniel Consultants of Columbia, Maryland, Bertison Associates, Columbia, Maryland, A Morton Thomason Associates of Rockville, Maryland. The top three selections were K C I Technologies, Century Engineering, Bertison Associates. All funding for the A and E consultants will be associated with tasks assigned to each A and E consultant and will come from the designated design engineering portion of funds previously approved by the mayor and city council from specific funding that will be considered and approved by the mayor. I'm sorry, the air. So, just to clarify that, I know that there were some questions before. We will not pay a retainage fee to have any of these firms on our shortlist, okay? So, you know, some places in Pennsylvania, other states will have engineers on as a retainer. We do not pay any kind of a retainage fee. It's recommended that the mayor and city council of Laurel award open-end contracts to the top three A and E firms as selected in part two above. These contracts will be for a period of four years with possibility of a one-year extension unless canceled by either party. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. Are there any questions or comments from the council in addition to what you were able to ask during the work session? I see your hand up. Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, and I just wanted to reiterate a clarification I think Councilmember Cole brought up during the work session that we aren't actually approving the spending of money in this, just for folks who might be tracking with us. This is to just approve standing engineers that as the city needs them, they're sort of on call for the various projects we do, and the selection process is to identify the qualified folks that we can tap when that happens. So, just a point of clarification. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments regarding this contract recommendation? I see Chris, Councilwoman Christine Johnson, please proceed.
And I just wanted to clarify, I guess, in addition to what Councilman Simmons was saying, this does not negate us finding bid recommendations moving forward too, because I know we have a like a policy that we look for the top three. This, how does this affect that? Or should be my question?
Sure. Well, what it is, is this is generally for engineering only or architectural services that we, because this is qualification-based, okay? We go forward with these three firms as our partners in different projects, whether it's us or F M P S or E C D or even Parks and Recs to design a park. We will generally go to these three firms and ask them for their, you know, a price from them to go ahead and proceed with this work is what is done. Does that answer your question?
They're like the subject matter expertise, but then, like I was saying, the bid recommendations are still open. I know that's what.
Yes, so construction, yeah. So, this is separate from construction. So, these firms would help us do prepare a set of plans that then we would put out to, as I did the first one for both Snowden Place, Ward Street, then we would go out to bid to the contractors based on the work product that was done by the engineering firm, and then we would get those prices, you know, hopefully six or more for those projects, yes.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. I see a question from Councilmember Mills. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. So, we're using the word clarify tonight. To clarify, this, these, these, this agent would be or agents would be like a a procurement department for the city? Or?
They're just engineers.
As you're saying, okay, just engineers, whereas though they're the ones maybe perhaps are putting together like the blueprints, the the architecture, right, and then that's like the blueprints. From the blueprints, this is where you get a number from to do the work from from the base on up, whatever project it is, and so that's what they'll be doing. So, that that's clear for me.
That is correct, Councilman. Yes, so generally, they will prepare plans, and they will also prepare a budget for us based on, you know, past projects, things of that nature, or there's a and actually a book out there called Means Cost Data that is used quite often in this area. And they'll give that to us, and then when bids come in, you know, we always like to make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover the construction side. And, you know, that's that's how a project basically takes shape.
Who who are we using before prior to this?
We were using K C I Technologies, Century Engineering, and another firm called E B A.
Okay, and so why is it three? Like?
It's three.
Same price across the board or?
Well, what they are is in the past, what we've done is we've rotated tasks to them, and then we evaluate the, you know, the pricing. And, you know, if need be, we send them back and say, I better look at your price one more time if they don't come back with the right price. We may go to the next firm, but that's why it rotates. There are some firms, you know, just like anything. And I'll say Councilman Simmons might know this, you know, there's people who are experienced in different phases of taxes, right? Well, we have different firms that are, they, one may have more experience in highway construction. One may have more experience in dam construction. One may have more experience in two oh four Fort Meade, the multi-service building, things of that nature. Or if we were doing a new public works facility, this one firm has done, you know, six public works facilities or ten park projects that, you know, Parks and Recs may look for, things of that nature.
So, Director Miller, you said something that kind of caught my attention. The fact that if 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 one agent has not met the time, you know, the timing, and then you will go to another one. But this first agent here has to be paid in order to do a job.
Yes.
And if they're not, and if they, the timing is off, then we go to another agent and have to pay another agent.
No, no, it doesn't, no, 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 no. So, what it is, is let's say we're given, I'll use Main Street as an example, okay, the curbing that's installed there, okay? We went to a consultant, asked them for a price, and basically told them, you have sixty days to get us plans to put out for bid, okay?
And we paid them.
And we didn't pay them until they were done, okay, until the project was bid and brought before you, then we will generally pay them. We might pay them because the plans that come into us are generally sixty-five percent plans, then one hundred percent plans, okay? And then bid doc, what we call the third item would be bid documents, and those consultants are paid each step of the way, or they can submit a bill each step of the way. Some of them don't submit a bill until it's all done. But that's that's how those projects will progress.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanna, I just wanna be that voice to say that I don't wish to pay someone for a job that hasn't done the job. You know, like if, because initially you said that we we paying them to to do a job, but they came up short. You know, like if, because initially you said that we we paying them to to do a job, but they came up short. And so then we got another company to do the same job, and then we paying them again.
Yeah, no, and that's that's never happened in the three years that I've been here now.
All right, all right. I just want to clear that, man. You know, the word is word of the day is clarification. All right, thank you very much. Don't want to take much time.
You're welcome, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Are there any additional questions or comments? I don't see any. All right, so I will now entertain a motion to approve the open-ended contract to the top three A and E firms, repeating them just for our record, KCI Technologies, Inc. of Fulton, Maryland, Century Engineering LLC, Hunt Valley, Maryland, and Brutus and Associates of Columbia, Maryland for a period of four years with the possibility of a one-year extension unless canceled by either party. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the A and E selections as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Cole. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a second from Councilmember Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Miller, also Director Bailey and Deputy Director Helms. Safka, am I saying it correctly? Okay. Thank you all for your time for researching these firms for us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Moving to agenda item number eleven, we have the introduction in first public hearing for ordinance number two zero four three, a text amendment for number two six seven from the Land Development Code, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, sponsored by the president at the request of the administration to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Section twenty dash twenty two point five zero, interim limited retail uses and providing an effective date. To provide us with additional context, we have Deputy Director Monte Burrow of Economic and Community Development and Legal Counsel Mr. Larry Taub. You both now have the floor.
All right. Good evening, and thank you, Madam President, Mayor, and members of the council. The information presented this evening is consistent with what was shared during the September third, twenty twenty five meeting. I would like to briefly reiterate and emphasize that text amendment number two six seven and ordinance number two zero four three propose a key change. They will allow various businesses to seek special exception approval if necessary to operate within the planned development area existing zone. Should there be any questions regarding amendment or ordinance, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Deputy Director Burrow. Mr. Larry Taub, do you also have context as well?
No, I think Mr. Burrow described that comprehensively, properly, and I'm simply here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding ordinance number two zero four three? I see Councilmember Adrian Simmons' hand. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. And if folks who, again, who are tracking with us, just good, trying to get in their mind where this is talking about, it's sort of some of those dental offices and professional offices just to the south of Aldi on Route One. And I think there's a Fairfield as well as the IRTP zoning area that we're looking, this would apply to. Deputy Director Burrow, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if I'm reading this text amendment correctly, the effect is to allow for the granting of special exception for generally no more than five years for interim limited retail use in those areas. I think I've read that correctly, but just to confirm.
Yes, I believe so. The basis of this amendment is to omit a clause that was written before nineteen ninety-three. So this will allow for example, nonprofit organizations to be housed in the industrial research technology areas. Yes.
Good, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Councilman Simmons, I might just just add that, you know, like honestly, I think it's, what we're dealing with here is simply the elimination of the prohibition against special exceptions, which just didn't make any sense and nobody quite recalls how that even came to being. But it is limited. I honestly can't recall if it's exactly five years, but there's a limitation on whatever the use is. So it may be five, but I just, I don't have it here in front of me. I apologize. But there is a limitation, and that will all be dealt with for any special exception application that does come in.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Taub.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? All right, I see no additional questions or comments from the council. I will now open the first public hearing portion for ordinance number two zero four three at six fifty five PM. For the record, Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if anyone has signed up to speak during the first public hearing portion on ordinance number two zero four three?
Oh, there's no one signed up, Madam President.
You said no one, right?
No one, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers signed up, I will now close the first public hearing portion for ordinance number two zero four three at six fifty five PM. If there are no hesitations from the council on this ordinance, this agenda item will be moved to the second public hearing with possible action during our September twenty second in-person meeting at six PM. Thank you, Deputy Director Burrow and Mr. Larry Taub. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Moving to agenda item number twelve, ordinance number two zero four four, text amendment number two six eight. This agenda item has been withdrawn from consideration at the direction and request of Mayor Keith R. Sidner. After further review by legal counsel, it was determined that the legislation is no longer needed. Moving to agenda item number thirteen, our final agenda item, we have resolution number eight dash two zero two five, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, sponsored by the president at the request of the administration for the purpose of approving procedures on social media use for the Laurel City Council. This procedure is designed to support council members in navigating compliance with the First Amendment, Maryland Public Information Act, Open Meetings Act, a city election code, and other statutory requirements. As mentioned in our recent work session, the Laurel City Council will have an official training held on Friday, September fifteenth at four PM. To provide us with additional context this evening, we have Director James Cornwall Shield from our Information and Technology Department. Director Cornwall Shield, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, Council President Clark and council members. Before you, as a resolution to adopt city council procedures on social media, a document designed to support the council in utilizing digital communication while upholding the many legal and ethical responsibilities we have as public officials. This document provides guidance on the use of official and personal social media accounts, ensuring compliance with the many legislative requirements that you just mentioned, as well as general best practices. It emphasizes transparency, accountability, and the protection of both the public trust and individual council members' rights. Thank you, and welcome any questions or feedback that you may have.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding resolution number eight dash two zero two five? All right. Seeing that there are no additional questions or comments from the council, I will now open the first public hearing portion for resolution eight dash two zero two five at six fifty eight PM. Madam Clerk, for the record, can you please confirm if anyone from the public is signed up to speak on resolution eight dash two zero two five?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak, Madam President.
Thank you for confirming. Seeing that there are no speakers signed up, I will now close the first public hearing portion for resolution eight dash two zero two five at six fifty eight PM. If there are no hesitations from the council, this agenda item will be moved to the second public hearing with possible action during our September twenty second in-person meeting at six PM. Thank you, Director Cornwall Shield, for your work on this. We appreciate it. All right, we have gotten through all of our agenda items. Thank you for your patience and for your work. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Remember, our meeting will be held on September twenty second at six PM in person. We want to see you there at the Laurel Municipal Center. You can also view it on our City of Laurel website or on our YouTube channel, Laurel TV. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned at six fifty nine PM. Have a wonderful evening.